Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of limitations to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a note that Councilman Marcus Major is absent tonight. Um, old business approval of minutes. The regular meeting minutes of August 18, 2022 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 18, 2022 as presented.
So moved.
A motion a second. Any discussion? No, call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
abstain.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number two is approval of minutes. The special meeting minutes of August 25, 2022 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of August 25, 2022 as presented.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion a second. Any discussion on this one? No, call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Twenty-fifth.
Yep.
Are you?
No.
No, I didn't think of abstaining.
Mr. Kirby?
Abstain.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? No takers? Uh, presentation, new business. Item number three is public hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate in consideration of resolution B nine, 2022. A public hearing is required for taxing entities who are planning to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Although the city does not intend to exceed the R and R, the budget was prepared using estimated property valuations and it is recommended that the city hold the R and R hearing to levy the tax dollars needed to fund the 23 budget, should the final valuations differ from the estimates. So I need a motion to open the public hearing for exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
So moved.
Have a motion a second. Any discussion? We can... Beth, do you wanna?
Yes, okay. So if you recall at the work session that we held in June, we intended to stay at the revenue neutral rate. However, I mentioned that I wasn't sure. Some of the information I had received from the state kind of indicated even though if you were staying revenue neutral, you may want to hold the revenue neutral rate hearing just because you're working with estimates. And we're only, we only have the estimated valuation at this point in time. So after consulting with the state and the county, it was recommended that we go ahead and publish and hold the R and R hearing, even though our intent is to stay at the revenue neutral rate. And in fact, the proposed budget that's for consideration on the next agenda item is at the revenue neutral rate. This just, all this does is if, if the actual valuation comes in at a different amount, and normally it's not a huge amount, but if, if we did not hold this revenue neutral rate, it would cap us at that mill levy and it might reduce the amount of tax dollars that we need to fund our budget. It's not gonna change, tax dollars are not gonna change from last year. We just want to be able to, if that estimated valuation changes, we need to be able to have that little wiggle room in order to keep the tax dollars the same as what we need to fund our budget. It's kind of confusing and this is kind of the first year, I think. I don't know of any other city that is doing this. Most of them are exceeding the revenue neutral rate. So I didn't have anybody else to kind of bounce ideas off of, so we're gonna go with this and see how it goes and learn from it and adjust next year if we need to. So the intent is still, we are not increasing taxes. We are staying revenue neutral.
Okay, we have a motion a second to open. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. We are open. Anybody like to participate in the audience at all? No takers? So I need a motion to close the public hearing for exceeding the revenue neutral rate?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
The public hearing is closed, so I need to approve, I need a motion to approve resolution number B nine, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Item number four is public hearing on consideration of the proposed 2022 budget. Should say 2023, right? Sorry?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The proposed 2023 budget will reflect a mill levy decrease of 4.605 mils. So I need a motion to open the public hearing for the 2023 budget.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to address the council or the governing body on, on the proposed 2023 budget? No takers? So I need a motion to close the public hearing for the 2023 budget.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
The public hearing is now closed. So I need a motion to approve the 2023 budget with a mill levy of three, 6.426.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number five is the M S E wall repair Lansing project 2022 dash three proposals. The mechanically stabilized earth, or M S E wall, installed as part of the original town center project has been gradually moving over the past few years. This project was identified as a future project in the 2022 SIP work session and submitted for engineering as part of the 2023 budget. During a rain event over the Fourth of July weekend in 2022, the wall experienced a failure. It was decided to accelerate the project and solicit for proposals. Proposals were solicited for a competitive sealed proposal. Due to the nature of the project and the need to move quickly, the prospective contractors were asked to solicit outside engineering expertise to address the wall failure. Proposals will be opened and evaluated by either the city council or a special committee of the city council. So I need a motion to designate a proposal review committee consisting of members of the city council, city engineer, then a city administrator to open and evaluate the proposals. This committee will then determine if additional information is needed from the submitting proposal teams and conduct interviews if needed. This committee will then report back their findings and recommendations to the city council for review and approval.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion a second. Any discussion? Do we know who built the wall originally?
Line Weaver Construction indicated that they were the general contractor on the, on the project. But as far as the specific subcontractor who constructed the wall, I'd, I can dig through the file and try to find that out, but I'm not.
I just wouldn't want to hire them again, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand. I understand that concern.
My question's not to this, but all up down Main Street, that wall is a lot of places. Along private property, along the golf course. When them start to fail, because they will, especially if you're not cutting the trees, are we responsible for them?
Uh, depends on who installed the wall and who's maintaining the wall. Like the private walls around Popeyes, that's all owned and operated by the developer of that area. But the, uh, specifically the one at the golf course, I'd have to do some more research to find out exactly where that is. If that's a, you know, a lot of times, even though the wall may have been constructed as part of the project, sometimes it's constructed for the, for the property owner, very similar to the way when we acquire property. Sometimes we pay for the fence and have them install the fence, so.
Well, if you go and there's a couple of houses, but if you drive down and look right behind the wall are saplings that are growing. And if they don't do something about them saplings, they're gonna push that wall out. Now, if the golf course has got to fix it and that's what they want to do, fine, let them fix it. If we gotta fix it, that's a different deal.
But did, the, the wall was put in on our Main Street enhancement program. Water Department, when they moved that water line on that front of the golf course, dropped that all down to there. But I don't know who, who was the one that put them there, was involved in the Main Street enhancement. Do you remember, Don?
Don.
Because they originally had to drop that, they moved all that out and dropped the, Landell had to drop that main walk down there along that side when they did the widening of the highway when we had our enhancement program. But I, I, I agree that something needs to be done about the wall, like, like Mr. Kirby saying. But if, if, uh, I don't know that we should blame, we have to make sure we put the blame at the right place.
I mean, it's a detention bond, correct? I mean, this is a detention area that we are responsible for?
In this instance, we are talking about the wall that is owned and operated by the city of Lansing as part of the regional detention facility that was installed as part of the town center.
I, I get that. It's just, I see that failing and then you drive down Main Street and you see the same type of construction of button private property, the golf course. You know, if they fail, who's that gonna be on? That, that's just my question. That's all.
Yeah, I believe that's a property owner, but we can, we can look into that.
Yeah, we'd have to double check the golf course example, but that's, that's a good point. And if it's one that we're supposed to maintain, we'll, we'll work to remove those trees if it's one that's on us.
Well, they're on top, behind the wall. So I'm just, and, and they're gonna, if they're not cut down and sprayed, they're gonna grow. And eventually they'll push that wall out. Like if it's a golf course's problem, fine, let them have it.
Yeah.
Got the same problem on the other side of the golf course, coming down Eisenhardt, a short wall. Down there is already leaning out, but I think that is responsibility of the golf course.
Just bringing it in.
Yeah, no, we'll find out. That's a good point.
I think what we're, um, what we're looking for today is, does anyone of the city council like to sit on the selection committee that's going to make the recommendation to the full council on which contractor's proposal is in the best interest of the city?
I'll do it.
I'll do it.
I'll do it.
Okay. I mean, we, we can't have more than that though, so that would, okay.
Three ideas, it's.
Who, okay, who was it?
Have a date?
No.
Gene Carey and who?
Don.
Okay.
Dan.
Dan.
I mean, Dan. Yeah.
I got the D and the N right. I got the D and the N.
It'd be my intention to, it'd be my intention to solicit availability of the parties involved.
Okay. All right. If there aren't any more questions, we had a motion and a second, so call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number six is executive session preliminary discussions of the acquisition of real property. I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA seventy-five, four, three, one, nine, Bravo six for a period of... Tim?
Thirty minutes.
For a period of thirty minutes, starting at seven fourteen and going until seven forty-four.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
I'm making motion, return to open session.
Second.
Have a motion a second to return to open session. Call a roll.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
We have returned to open session. City attorney?
I have a report.
Any department heads who haven't spoke tonight? I know you want it. Um, city engineer and city administrator. Tim, what do you got?
So I, I put in my report, we're applying for a grant from the state of Kansas to replace the bridge just south of the Catholic church. So one thing to keep in mind, if we're fortunate to receive that grant, on something that large, even the city's share would be hundreds of thousands of dollars. So keep your fingers crossed, but if we have good news, we would need to include our share in the budget next summer for 2024.
Which, which bridge?
Soto Road. The Soto Road.
Isn't that the one the county pays fifty percent of?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's fifty percent.
Fifty?
So if we get a grant and really whatever's remaining, we'd only have to do fifty percent, is my understanding.
I believe so. I, I think the only thing I'm trying to say is if the bridge is a million and a half and the state covers X percent, even our share and the county's, I guess, would still be pretty expensive. But you're right, there is an agreement with the county to pay for half of it.
Okay. No, I just wanted to let them know.
You are correct on that. We spoke about code enforcement a fair amount. Uh, we made sure to put that report in, uh, in the council packet this week. I'll work hard and, and try to be more diligent about remembering to do that. Um, so please be sure to double check that.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
Under the vehicle report, man, certified letters sent twenty days, what's exactly what does the twenty days mean?
Uh, hang on a second.
That's all right. Vehicle report. Certified letter sent twenty days.
I'm not sure what the twenty days indicates. Vehicle reports should be anything that's related to a vehicle, like parking on the grass, parking, you know, any of those types of parking issues.
I just wondered if, what the twenty day?
I'd have to look at the code. Some of our stuff does require more notice than others. So I'd have to check, I'll double check that and I'll let you know.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I don't remember it needing twenty days instead of ten, but.
I just saw, read through it again today and saw that.
Yeah.
I meant to call you and I didn't.
I'll check it and let you know.
Okay. I know you won't.
That's all I have.
We'll go around the horn then. Dan, you're up tonight first.
I have nothing, mayor.
Okay, Gary?
Tim, I really like your ideas for the pool that you sent out in your email to us. I think those are some really good starts. I especially like the open house. I, I think we've got to have a time where we allow citizens to come in really get the correct information. I think a lot of people, a few people that I've talked to, already they're thinking it's property tax funded. And so it's kind of cool to dispel that rumor.
Yeah.
And that's, that seems to loosen them up a little bit.
Yeah.
So, uh, I like those ideas and I worry that, and I've had this conversation, that the people that are against it, I, I don't, you know, I worry that they mobilize, that we're ready for that. And so misinformation that's going out, we would need to counteract that with those actually factual, alternative facts.
Yeah, and you know, I, I'm open to if there's any HOA meetings you guys have or, or clubs or anything like that. Me, Jason, perhaps even the mayor would, would be okay coming, educating groups, talking to people. And again, it's, it is challenging because the city has to kind of walk that fine line of.
And another idea I had, and I don't even know if, if, if this is something that would be allowed, but could somebody, if, you know, like sporting events, like a football game on a Friday night, there may be a lot of people there. And I don't know if you could have, if that's allowed, could we have like an information booth or?
Yeah, I don't know. Education and information, oh, yes, sir.
Correct. That's what I'm thinking. No, we're not campaigning, but just information available.
We were definitely gonna have one at, uh, the Fall Fest, I know that.
Right.
The, the thought of doing one at a football game hadn't crossed my mind.
Yeah, I don't even know if it's a good idea or not, but here's the thought.
Well, I'll, I'll be at the September school board meeting, so we could ask at that point.
Okay.
And you can have like a committee or something and do that though. I mean, like we talked, like if the citizens have a committee that want to help go pro or con, I don't care which way. They can sell, you know, vote yes shirts or something at the football game, you know. Put lion on it.
Yeah.
I've seen stuff on Nextdoor West Mary for the pro, you know, encouraging people to vote yes, so.
Cool.
That all you had?
It is, mayor, I'm sorry.
No, that's right. Done.
One of my questions was on the pool too, or comment. We were gonna do some mailings and some stuff on that.
Yep.
When is that going to start?
We were shooting for the first week of October for that. We have all the text completed and everything, but we're shooting for that first week of October.
When would we, uh, really start crunching numbers as far as costs and operating costs and all that other kind of stuff? I've been getting a couple of emails from a couple of people in the city asking that kind of a question.
So I mean, right now we've, we've got kind of a very broad eight to nine million range and that's.
That's the bill, right?
Yep. I think if it's approved, we'll be able to have more definite figures.
Yeah, because we'll have to figure that in our budget for maintenance and employees and all that other kind of stuff.
But I know the, our consultant, I mean, he was, he was pretty upfront when he spoke with Jason and I, I mean, it's, it's pretty rare for a pool to make money. So I mean, we, we probably.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, but so I mean, he, he's given us.
I don't have a problem telling a citizen that. I'm just saying that, you know, because what he was just saying about property tax, you know, I'm starting to get those kind of questions too, because everybody thinks, I've been telling people that, you know, the sales tax, if it's approved, that money is what we want to do to build it.
Yep.
But then on top of that, we'll have to figure into the city's budget for the maintenance and upkeep, employees and all that.
I don't think.
I want to say.
I would think if once it's approved, you would have plenty of time for that, because once it's approved, you're probably two years before you can start construction, right?
I don't think.
Well, there's.
Okay, so I think you're mixing two things up with the property taxes and sale taxes. I know what you're talking about though for maintenance. But the idea was you would buy a season pass or you're going to buy something to get into the pool. A lot of those funds will be used to maintain the pool.
Well, yeah, that'll be passed through, but I mean, it'll still be, we still have the budget for all of that.
Yeah, he.
Yes.
I think he, our consultant, I want to say just really rough numbers. I mean, even with season passes, birthday parties, daily fees, we'd, we'd still probably lose maybe thirty or forty thousand dollars a year, I would guess, was, was his estimate.
I figured it'd be a little more.
Well, and again, we, we, we haven't, we haven't constructed anything, so it could be more, it could be less. But I mean, that was, that was a really rough figure that he gave me and Jason. I want to say it was, his estimate was like, you recoup seventy-five percent of your expenses. It was kind of his estimate, so.
Right.
Does that kind of answer the?
No, that answers my question. I'm just saying that, that I understand what we're all saying.
Yeah.
But I'm a property owner out here and that other thirty, forty thousand dollars or whatever else is, is going to be needed to keep that thing running, is gonna come out of tax money.
Could be.
Yes, I said.
Might be, I mean, it might be the, the use tax, the guest tax. So I mean, we have to figure out what that delta is and then figure out how we can fund.
Or how that's.
The, right. So I mean.
Through, through our budget. I got that.
Because, I mean, realistically, can you change?
It's always through our budget, okay? We fund everything through the budget. What I'm saying is we will try to do everything but tax the property to support the.
In other words, raise mills in order just for that, is what you're saying.
Yeah, we're not doing it.
Trying, gonna try not to. Yeah, I got you.
And I, we will lose badly if we do that.
We will. But I mean, like Tim had mentioned previously, once we figure out what the cost is, once we figure out how much the sales tax would bring in and then what the maintenance is and operating costs will be, then maybe you don't have three slides that you have. You now have a slide, right? Maybe you don't have eight lanes and a swim lane. You now have six. So we can modify stuff as well, if we need to, so we can make it affordable.
And to answer, uh, Mr. Garvey's statement about the timing, um, yeah, I mean, if this passes on November eighth, I would imagine they're gonna get the ball rolling on design almost immediately. And since we've kind of given them a general idea, I want to say they were thinking like maybe six months for design. And then after that, six months, you put it out to bid. So I mean, it would be, a lot of things would really need to fall right exactly into place for it to be open in 2024, but that's, that's a possibility. But you know, there, we couldn't have any supply shortages or anything like that. But, but that would be an outside possibility.
Another pandemic.
Yeah. Exactly.
Little things like that.
Yes.
What else do you have, Dan?
Uh, the other thing I got is, uh, on, uh, all the fiber going into town. Clear Wave is, their representative's been walking around the neighborhood, stalking people, introducing himself. He lives over here in Lansing. The one that's gonna be their manager, which is great. The thing that I have, I've been getting complaints on and the thing that's bothering me too is AT&T. You know, they're stringing a lot of their stuff, uh, pole to pole. The stuff they're putting underground though, they're putting them damn big ass boxes in front of houses.
Yeah.
Uh, to me, that's a no-go. I don't want to see the ridge of my neighborhood or any other neighborhood in here have a damn green box, three foot by whatever, standing in front of their house. So what I'm saying is, is there, is there any, I brought this up two weeks ago to you.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can get AT&T to put them flush with the ground or make them stop the train until we do some ordinance or something that says, no, you gotta put them underground or?
Yeah, so we, uh, because I know, uh, you had reached out to us and Councilman Major reached out to us too. Uh, we set up a meeting with AT&T, so we're having a meeting with them, uh, on, on Wednesday of next week. So if you wanted to attend also, you're welcome to do that. I know it's, uh, it's challenging what we can, you know, say they can and can't do, but we can certainly regulate things to make it a little bit more.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I mean, we just had a meeting here, we're talking about aesthetics in the town. We were, you know, all griping and grumbling about, you know, gravel driveways.
Yeah.
Now all of a sudden, we're gonna put, you know, three foot green boxes in front of every house in Lansing? Uh, to me, that's a no-go. I'm saying, pull their permits, make them stop construction until we can make a deal with them to put them ground, ground level.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned.
Yep. And we're, we're meeting with them Wednesday to talk about that.
That's fine. Thank you. That's all I got, mayor.
Hey.
I've received a few phone calls on the suspected walk away from the prison. What, I know back, I've lived here all my life, they've talked about they blew, always used to blow the whistle when they had a walk away. I'm glad you remember that. I don't know if they've got a whistle to blow anymore, but I was asked, and even by, I had a county resident called me out here off the five highway. Wanted to know if there's something that the city, it might, you know, we put out amber alerts or something to notify the, the local people that's got, everybody's got mobile phones. Is there something that we can do to let the residents, you know, we're in a prison city.
Yeah.
We have a walk away. I, I know that it's, it's hard on the prison, on the guard because they gotta do account. And if the count's okay, well, then they got a problem because they done said that they're, but, you know, we can say possible until it's confirmed. It's a possible or confirm.
Yeah. Yeah.
But people are, there's a different type of clientele than there was twenty years ago living in Lansing. And people are more, uh, uh, concerned about the prison walkaways than they was. You know, years ago, the prisoners worked for the city and worked, we worked around, you know, they worked for the city and around.
Yeah.
But now people are scared of them. They're afraid that the kids getting off school buses, walking home. Did you have any idea of, of anything we could do?
Yeah, the, the idea of the amber alert came up from someone else too, so we reached out to Representative French about that. Um, and he was gonna talk to the K D O C to see what it would take. I, I don't know if that's possible or not, but that idea came up.
What about a different tone? You know, they've got the air raid tone on the sirens, they got the, uh, storm siren, tornado siren.
Yeah.
We've got sirens out. I mean, is there something that, you know, is there a way that can them, can they be adjusted to, to throw out a different? That was brought up. You know, there's two different tones now they have for the sirens that we listen to when they test them. Can we come up with, is there a way they could do a third one with Jason? Can't think of anything now. Would be able to make, uh, E O C guy. Is there something that we could do to maybe a different whale sound or something that there's a, that, that? People think a possible walk away. Something to let the, let the residents know.
Yeah, we could, we could ask.
There is a concern. There's, I've been.
Yeah, no, I get that. No, I, yeah, I agree. Um.
The school gets a notice.
I was gonna say, the schools get notified.
They did, they did a lock there.
Yeah.
And then, and they've got the app.
We've always done that.
Yeah.
Social media headed out in about thirty minutes anyway.
And the schools have a way to get to the individual. If you've got kids there and you can get on their app, whatever it is, there it used to be.
Correct. And anytime we have one of those, there's also a notice that goes out to all parents.
Right.
Can anybody get on that app?
Snow cancellation notice.
Carrie, can anybody get on that app, do you know?
I believe so.
And like, that could be just something we could tell all the residents.
Yeah. Yeah. Because I know that.
Then download the app and you get the updates too.
Because one of the residents who reached out to me,
Already.
One of the residents who reached out to me had said, you know, what, what happens if a person doesn't have the internet? And that's where.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
That was a reason for the, the whistle one back years ago.
Yeah.
Because you could be outside, you cannot have your phone in your hand. I mean, if you hear the, the whistle when it blew, you knew that there's, there was problems at K S P.
Yeah. It's funny you mentioned that, Dave, because I got a phone call, somebody said that, and I go, I didn't hear the whistle. So I don't know when they stopped it, but I was like, I didn't hear the whistle.
I can hear it if I'm outside, the wind's blowing right, then I can hear it.
I was gonna say, because sometimes we have people complain that they can't hear the tornado sirens.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a challenge. But we, we reached out to Representative French, though, about, you know, if he has any ideas or we can better notify people. Um.
The amber word thing would be, would be, I think would be a big step.
Yeah. In a, you know, a, a.
I mean, I don't know if this makes any sense, but, uh, could you not just call the, uh, facility and talk to the warden? You know, ask him directly? Is that a crazy idea?
Like.
I mean, we could have, can, can we find out how they get the word out?
Who are they sending it to?
That's what I mean.
And then how can they send it to our residents? Like, anybody could sign up if we can, let people sign up.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, there's a list, and we're on the list, but it takes about two hours before they get to us.
Yeah, I would like, what I'm talking about is, why don't you
Yeah.
have the, uh, alarm go off or the siren go off?
Yeah. Yeah, we can ask them.
What's your, what's your reason for not?
Yeah.
Because that was something we used to do.
We don't have somebody to turn it on.
Yeah, we can ask them about that, because I don't think they've used the siren or whistle since I've been here.
I don't think the whistle's, whistle's over there anymore. I think they've taken all that out. It's all gone now.
Yeah.
It's a new, the new prison, they don't have all that, the old time stuff in it, but.
I don't remember the app, the name of it, that the school uses, but anybody can use that app.
Yeah, we'll just, I mean, what we should do is just figure out all the ways that you might be able to get the information quicker than what you currently have. And then publish that out to the residents, either hit them on Facebook.
Well, it goes.
We can put it in the.
You've got amber alerts and you've got it on your phone. When it goes out, it's like everybody's reaching for the phone, because they're all getting it simultaneously.
Right.
So.
But I, I was looking, like, we all concerned, as me and Mr. Kirby had talked, we've got a lot of older residents that don't have mobile phones. And that's, that's what I'm looking into that, that's what I'm trying to say. Is there a way that outside siren could be used? So could you maybe ask them about that too?
Yeah, I can ask them that, yeah.
Put all the methods that we can get. All right. Dave, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Gene?
I don't think they found him yet, have they?
No, they did.
They found him in Kansas, Kansas. Yeah, you don't know that, and you have the internet.
Oh, I know, because, because Time Warner has, has sent out a thing, because the internet was down.
Captured.
Uh.
Can they have internet if you don't have it?
There's no Time Warner.
Yeah. I just want to, uh, uh, offer our condolences to the young family and the death of Ada. If you've been here long enough, and this is one time I have been, what they started and wore right now. And there, there's no doubt that, uh, uh, them and a couple of other people were instrumental in getting us started and going, and it's been grown from there, so, uh, condolences of the family. Uh, we spent a lot of time and money on infrastructure, and it's not glorious. It's not fancy, and you don't think about it till you get flooded and you can't have any water. And Mississippi's issue goes beyond the flood. They've been boiling water for four weeks prior to the flood. So it's one of the things, like I say, it costs a lot of money. It's not anything you think of till you don't have it. So we always need to keep our eye out on keeping the infrastructure up to, up to snuff. That's all I have, sir.
All right, thanks.
Uh, did, uh, what everybody said so far, I definitely agree with Gene about Ada Young. She, I mean, Gene and Ada were honored as, uh, Volunteers of the Year one time in Lansing, so they've done a lot for the community. They actually work for the, uh, the Historical Society, so they've done a lot for this community. So our condolences go out to their family.